I'm glad to lead this in the fight and the United States of America and into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good world of the religion that has us all.
Thank you. We'll start off with public comment. If there's anyone here who has any public comment that's not related to the agenda as printed, please step up to the table, state your name, and what your public comment would be. I have to give it 10 minutes or we have to sit. So if there is no one, we will move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, if everyone would please sign the sign-in sheet on your way out. Thank you. Right here.
Okay, Xavier, do you want to pass that around now?
Great.
Save some time. In the stair, we have no one on Zoom.
We have no one on Zoom and we are recording.
Okay, thank you. So we want to move to item number four, which is a life-saving award. I'll introduce Chief Lamont to come in and share his comments.
Thank you. Not sure how many of you are here for this, but thank you to the council of Mr. Mayor and thank you to everybody that may be here for this award. I would ask Officer Dakota Garrel to come up here and see Bracy. So we have two awards that are being given out. We don't give out awards very often. I've been here almost five years and I've been giving out three awards, at this point, four awards. This is for one incident that occurred in May of this year. So just going to read a real brief synopsis of what happened and then I'll read what the awards are for, what they stand for, and how we came about being here today. "May 21st, 2024, approximately 11 o'clock in the morning, Central Dispatch at St. Louis Police Department received a 911 call from Beveridge Meyer on Lake Street of St. Orleans. The caller reported a man identified as Ross Arsenault had collapsed and was not breathing. Several members from the St. Louis Police Department, the Fire Department, and care rescue quickly responded to the scene. On arrival, a quick assessment confirmed that Ms. Arsenault was no longer breathing, necessitating the initiation of CPR. Officer Dakota Garrel promptly began performing CPR on Ms. Arsenault. After a while, Stephen Bracy relieved Officer Garrel and continued CPR process to ensure continuous care. CPR continued until Ms. Arsenault was in the ambulance and had the care and care personnel. These swift life-saving actions were instrumental in Ms. Arsenault's survival." We're talking outside. I've done this 25 years. I've done CPR a bunch of times, medicine a bunch of times, and Steve's done it numerous times with rescuing. It rarely is successful. This is a testament of how hard they worked and that it stires the line for him to be alive today. It's a great job by both of you and a great representation of the city of St. Orleans and the work that everybody does. Officer Garrel, your actions on May 21st, 24, you are going to be awarded the St. Orleans Department Life Saving Award. This award is presented to an officer for the saving of a human life. It's intended for officers directly responsible for the saving of human life in instances involving fires, drownings, medical emergencies, vehicle accidents, rescues, suicide prevention, or the sole action of the officer with life-saving acting themselves. You have a ribbon coming. We've got ribbon coming in the end. So at this point, you're just getting a certificate, but I greatly appreciate the work of the day. Most of you in this room know Steve Bracy for being part of the city. Works with the Pride Department. He does some parking enforcement. He's not a sworn officer. With that said, we have an awards program and the work that Dakota discussed is for sworn personnel. So what Steve is getting, I'll read it, is your actions on May 21st, 24, you were to St. Orleans Department Civilian Citation Award. This award may be given by the Awards Committee of Conover Mason, the chief, for instances where exceptional performance by an officer or non-sworn employee has brought to the attention of the committee. It may include all types of performance considered above normal for those instances indicative of exceptional ability in handling a police problem or community issue. It may include sex, items, suggestions for improving department or, in this case, a department member, notable action that's above normal routine and expectations of an employee to include exceptional work on a particular incident. That is a life-saving award for you. I'd like to say I'm very proud of these guys. Again, we go to a lot of calls every day, every week, every year, that impact people's lives. This will directly impact somebody being with us today as well. Thank you very much.
I think I'd just like to speak for the council when I say thank you to Steve and Dakota for short. Ross Arsenault, many of us know. Been in business for 48 years. Has been a stellar business on Lake Street. And I know he and his family appreciate your efforts for sure. I think it's huge. I think we as a council, we as residents of the St. Louis City never truly realize how much you folks do. We get to read the messenger about the barking dog and the fountain wallet, but there's so much more to our police department. I would say that we, as a city, as a council, we did not fall for the defunding of the police when that was an active movement. And I am grateful we did not. I'm thankful we did not. And I'd like to thank not only Steve and Dakota but all the officers present today. As I said, we will never know what you go through on a daily basis. And I don't think, unless you're part of a family, you will never know. So on behalf of the council, I just want to thank you all. Special thanks to Dakota and Steve for your efforts on that day. And we greatly appreciate your commitment to the city of St. Louis and our residents. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move ahead with second reading and adoption of affiliation ordinance repeal. Tom, is that you?
Well, you thought those life-saving awards were exciting. Second reading is pretty much technical changes. This implements the water and wastewater and then that tax for noggins and removes the affiliation.
As stated on the agenda, this is the second reading. Little or no common, I believe, of the first reading.
I'm going to adopt the affiliation ordinance repeal.
For a second?
Second.
Want to buy time or second or like that? Any questions or comments? From this year doing or this year?
It's my honor. Depends on what you can say next.
Any questions, Tom? All right. I will, I'll vote the paper approving repeal. Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? During that, the ordinance repeal will pass. And until last week, we'll see a best, right?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move item seven to the next item for discussion. Moving down the wastewater storm unit.
Motion second to the agenda. Second by Trudy. Any comments on that? During that, we will adjust the agenda accordingly. And we will move to public safety forum as item six instead of seven. I think some of you may be here for that purpose.
I think so.
So, as many people know in the office, we have a very successful, if you want to call that, public safety forum. 300 plus people. We have, as a city, have started outlining some of the activities that we want to pursue. So many may know that we're going to launch and the new drug investigation unit as soon as possible. Tom, I think we have one person lined up and insert of another.
We have, yeah, the senior staff member making his way through the background check process. And we got some good news on that this morning.
And so timeline on that would be what?
We think he could start the end of August. Or September.
Okay, so that's one item from the moving forward for public safety. Continue efforts to reduce the encampments in the city. For those who don't know, we cleaned up the one down by Food City. Some of those individuals moved over by Lillie on Aldis Street. They're across the road from the Lillie Park, which does not bode well for families with kids in Lillie. And we've been in contact with the railroad and they have contaminated, cleaned. They brushed column originally about a month or two ago. And now they're doing a deeper dive and cleaning that area up and moving individuals out of there as well. Where they end up, we do not know. But we will continue to monitor those situations as we move forward this summer. We are going to encourage and support neighborhoods forming neighborhood watch chapters. We're going to be coordinating a meeting of that. Tom, with Jason Weatherby, correct?
Yeah, I mean, kind of a how-to session. You know, I mean, those are really neighborhood driven with, you know, some backup support from the PD. But really, the idea, as you said, is a real grassroots issue.
I saw some municipalities looking this up. Clinton Newske had posted on their PD site a how-to and the information in National Neighborhood Watch Group cameras. It's under Sheriff's, but that's another move into two. I think that'll help prevent people from going off on a tangent that may not attend to committee or a training meeting.
Yeah, there's a bunch online. I haven't started them all.
I'll add that I installed a couple of Ring cameras at my house. And I think last Thursday, 2:30 in the morning, I had a picture of somebody trying to break into my truck. The neighbor had some things stolen from the garage. So I sent out the photo. It's called the Ring Neighborhood. And the responses, I received a lot of responses. We saw it on the Ring Neighborhood. So when we talk about neighborhood watches, I don't want people to think that we're, there are people out patrolling the streets. There's a lot of things we can do other than having people walk around the streets or we can form communities with just those people who have Ring. You know, what did you see under your T? And someone actually contacted me and said, "Did you have anything on your camera from this night?" And I had a little bit of something on my camera. So it really works. And so the Ring people, I call them Ring people, already have a lot going on, so to speak.
I will say that I started a little group just on Diamond Street, a lower part of Diamond Street because we have a bad character living on that street. And we formed it through like a Facebook Messenger group. And it's been pretty, no, we're not like patrolling the street, but it's been sort of a campaign to kind of watch out for each other and share information, coordinate efforts with the police. That was, that was kind of a, I think that's, I know that Caleb had had with Officer Weatherby before Caleb and I kind of are spearheading something for the city. And he, one of the suggestions that Officer Weatherby had made, and I think Caleb could speak more to this than me, but that there'd be like a captain for the group that would be like a person that would be in contact with the police for such things. Because it's difficult for the police to field hundreds of calls from individuals. So, you know, it would be better to have like pods with somebody who can, is trustworthy, that can kind of field the information.
I think you speak to one of the biggest components they push on the setting up these groups is having a liaison officer that works with these groups to be able to provide that information you're collecting back. And that was a big component. I talked to Weatherby back in February about when I met with him. And he said that we had a neighborhood watch in our ward, actually, at one point. But what happens with the neighborhood watches, and it's a good thing when it's needed, is it ebbs and flows based on the need. So once the need's gone, the groups tend to disperse. And I think having, like you're talking about, the Ring groups and stuff, continue to be a thing will help kind of support that.
And those are things that, I mean, I, the police call and I was able to send that, you know, 30 seconds right to the officer. And so he has it. Having it on my phone right now. And it was a.
We had a neighborhood watch meeting last Tuesday night. We had, there was 13 of us in all, one police officer. And we had a great turnout. And we've established a text system that we can let each other know when we see things go on. And I mean, I think a lot of positive things came out of that. And it was, we had, we used to have them, you know, like every six months. And we kind of waned from that a little bit just because of circumstances. So it was a beautiful night. We had it out in backyard, light refreshments. And I think it went well. Lasted about an hour, hour and a half. And we had some, Officer Weatherby had given me some actual street signs, neighborhood watch signs. So Marty put up some signposts and a couple of people that wanted them and installed the signs. And I also had ordered some neighborhood watch stickers that you could put on your door. And so we passed those out. So, you know, it's a step and hopefully it'll just get better as time goes on.
I mean, it's something as simple, I mean, because people are stealing packages that are being delivered. Like if you see on your Ring camera that you have a package, you could ask, you could say, "Hey, could somebody go hold my package for me?" Right? Like you could do things like that to make it harder for people to break the law. You know, we have to outsmart the criminals.
First Street still has a sign. The old sign that we have.
Yes.
Yeah, it's still there.
Well, and I think outsmarting, but also coming together, you know, in my particular neighborhood, we had, you know, we had Nick Cale. So I think it was important to come together as a community to work together and try to gather information, get him arrested. Hopefully that continues to move in the right direction. But I think that just that community support, coming together, especially for something big like that, because it can be very, very unsafe. It's essential that everybody in the neighborhood is aligned.
I'm going to turn this over to you, Tim. You guys have had the discussion, which was adopt landlord ordinance addressing problem tenants with ongoing criminal behavior.
This is the committee that's formed and we're looking into, I hate to call it a landlord ordinance, maybe a rental housing ordinance or something like that. It just makes the owner of the property responsible for what goes on at the property. A lot of communities have adopted these ordinances with little challenge and some have adopted with great challenge. But I think it's something we need to have. It's not to be onerous on the folks that are doing a good job. But it might require some property owners to take a little bit more, take a little bit more pride in their property and maybe scrutinize a little more the tenants, the patrons that are entering onto the property. So we're just getting started now. And maybe by the end of summer, we'll have something ready to put forward to the council.
Do you expect any problems with civil rights?
I don't think so. I mean, as long as it's crafted, we'll have our attorneys for the city take a look at it. But I think, I think we can give it a go.
I think we also want to make sure that good folks who might be, you know, struggling to pay their own rent still also have a nice place to live. Like some of the people that collect Section 8 rent, their places are not worthy for people to live in. Everyone deserves a nice place to live in, especially people with families. So I think both of, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. Some landlord accountability and carefully vetting the people who are staying there in their places and also making sure that good folks who might not have a lot of money also have a building that is safe to stay in.
When you have a police department having to go to the same property a dozen times in 30 days, that's a problem.
And sometimes landlords don't even know.
Other than for domestic violence.
Right. Well, if it's, yeah.
Yeah, because for domestic violence, then that's.
That shouldn't be held against a domestic violence victim.
Oh, right, right.
Right, so you don't want to discourage people who might be a victim of domestic violence from calling the police because a landlord might get in trouble. But landlords aren't even notified when police are called to their rental units. And I think that that is something, if I were a landlord, I would want to know that.
I think you have a valuable point, though, that when this had been implemented elsewhere, that question become a civil liberties. And I think that's been addressed by a lot of cities that we can use as a tool to develop ours to make sure we don't infringe on that and give tools to landlords that might use them against tenants that are otherwise.
And we have a lot of really good landlords in the city and some that could use a little work.
Most of the ones I've talked to are encouraged by this. They want it to happen.
Because they're the good landlords.
Well, and I think that there are laws on the books. They should be empowered by the laws that are in the state of Vermont that do, like when they have, when their home, when their property is being used for illicit, you know, activities, there are laws on the books that allow them to go through the eviction process faster.
But it becomes, it becomes a tool for the landlord to use in the eviction process. Right?
It could be helpful.
It kind of helps a landlord when they can say, "Look, there's a breach of a municipal ordinance going on in my building. How do you get these people out?" And that's why.
It'll save them money, actually, from having to take people to court to get them evicted.
Right, right. They shouldn't have to go through the, you know, months of challenges to get somebody out of there that's been dealing drugs or whatever.
The next item on our list was encourage the culture of accountability consequences for social service agencies seeking to partner with the city. So an example of that might be as individuals use the services, we want to use that opportunity to educate those individuals about what resources are available and how they might be able to better themselves by utilizing some of those resources. We think that sometimes that, and I don't say this for all agencies, but there are times when the bar is pretty low. And I think we, we think it's time to raise up our, for example, Martha's Kitchen. Don't think you're just going to Martha's Kitchen and steal food and pay no regard to the rules in place. There's, that person doesn't have a right to keep going back to Martha's Kitchen if that's the way they're behaving. So we will continue having those conversations with the agencies and panels and see how we might raise the bar for expectations on how they may, you know, the very simple example I gave, I didn't read it off the head, got bags off at Martha's Kitchen and said, "If anyone wants to give back to the community, use bags." I don't know if anyone took a step on it. But simple things like that can go a long ways in my mind, so.
Tim, would that also be, you know, some agencies give out needles so people who are using drugs can have a clean needle? And then we find the dirty needles in the park. So would that, you know, if I'm going to give you a clean needle, you have to give me your dirty needle back? Or have the people who are getting the clean needles go pick up the needles that they're leaving behind? Like is that also, does that stay under that bullet? Is what I'm asking.
Could very well. I mean, we, the abundance of needles that are being found throughout town is really concerning. But it's really become an issue probably over the last three or four months since winter broke. We had, I looked to Marty, we had a portlet fold from the park on Wednesday nights because it was filled with needles. And the company that supplied the portlet said, "We're not, we're not going to supply a portlet if this is going to be the, what we find in a portlet on a regular basis." So they pulled the portlet. I see we have two new ones there, maybe from a different company.
They're going to bring it, no, they're pulling out. They're only going to bring it in for the events now.
Because people are abusing them.
Which is more costly to us as a community, for sure. I mean, that's a frustrating thing for me is that we've had to change our ways for a variety of reasons. And this is one of them. Costs us more money. Portlets have to come and go. We had to pull the dugouts from Barlow Street School because people were cutting the fence and living inside and leaving needles and other surprises. So we're, we should not have to encounter that, right, as a community. So we're hoping some of this will start to connect. You know, in my message, I encourage people to leave lights on all the time. I think that does make a difference. Some people are concerned about the cost, but I think the cost is minimal if you left a front porch light on or a garage light on outside on a regular basis.
We installed solar-powered floodlights so it's not hitting the electric on a regular basis. Stays on for maybe 30 seconds when people.
Oh, we put it on for two minutes. We put it on for max.
So it definitely helps, especially if there's cameras around the house to hook up to people that are possibly being malicious.
Jim Salzmann, you'd love to hear that.
Yeah, right.
I need to get up for the times, I guess. So we are, we are looking at a number of different things. This is not the end-all by any means. We're definitely open to suggestions. You know, I think if people have thoughts on how we can improve the situation, you know, I've heard more people want to see foot patrol in the downtown area on nights when the band concert or we have other events. As many of you know, we started the town coverage as of July 1. So that will, there'll be some adjustments there as well. But I think we have a lot of good things in place, but we're definitely open to more suggestions moving forward.
Tim, the other thing that came up from the forum was like trimming back some branches and increasing lighting in certain places. Is that something that Marty, that you guys have been keeping an eye on?
Yeah, we've done some this last week. But if there's other areas, then they can call.
There's one stat point. We, we will be unable to take Mike Muschi upon his offer to deputize him. Mike will not be patrolling the streets of St. Louis.
Although if the neighborhood watch.
No, there you go.
He could be our, he could be our guy. He's on my street.
Any comments on this, folks? Thanks for coming in and thanks for your.
I just have one question. Did you say that Officer Weatherby was going to do a presentation? Were you scheduling that?
If that happens, I'll make sure to reach out to you. As soon as I know.
What did you think?
Oh, he said, well, he said Weatherby was working on something. But I was going to follow up with him and get it out too.
But probably that's something that the city will put out to all the wards. It shouldn't just be one particular.
But I'll make sure.
What we establish isn't just like, it's words, it's word-specific. It's like for anybody in the city who wants to participate. Although I feel like our participation is kind of more, you know.
Situation.
Well, I think it's more people who want to, who just kind of want to see, you know, what's like what people are talking about. Which is not what we're attending.
Regarding street lighting and lighting stuff. Lighting done really well, as I understand. I did quite a bit of work on street lighting when I was on the energy committee in Newburyport, Massachusetts. But street lighting is a very imperfect solution to that because you see the people who are in the streetlight, but then just a few feet to the other side, you don't, you don't see them at all. The street lighting makes them invisible. And so I learned quite a bit about it and decided that as much as I learned, I really didn't know, you know, how to use light. I really didn't know, you know, how to use lighting effectively. It's a very complex issue to get the results you want for whatever that's worth. And there are people who specialize in that.
I appreciate that.
Maybe it's more of encouragement for folks to install lighting on their property.
Floodlights.
Yeah, because like where we installed our, where we installed ours, we get the high-powered one. If, when somebody walks by, it lights up.
Oh, and in fact, I think, you know, you know, your solution to have the motion detection key to that, that's really good. But from the standpoint of like traffic safety, for example, streetlights can be extremely dangerous.
Right.
Because you see the people who are being lit up. What you don't see is the person running out of the dark, you know, the kid.
Where, right.
And all of a sudden, you know, you know. And so there, there's just a lot of details here that really matter. But the motion sensor stuff is great.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments on this, and council, any comments? Any concerns, any? I would just, not that I get the last word, but I would just say that for the wrong reasons, it was great to see the turnout at the public forum. I don't, Marty was around for six years. I don't know, you had the federal delegation up. I don't know that you have three hundred people to... So it is, it's a concern and we're going to do our best as a council to protect it. And what I'd say, that one other thing we, from our budget, we are transferring some funds that we had focused on downtown more to the, to the public safety end of things. I'm not sure what that's going to be, but we'll, we'll be using some funds to focus on the public safety as well, so.
I have one question. Do you anticipate with the police now having the town that they're going to be more stretched in?
Well, that's a wait-and-see attitude, I think.
We added four. We added a bunch of officers, though.
Yeah, we, we have to, well, right. We...
Hopefully not.
Plans to add four patrol plus two investigators. So, I think we should take a wait-and-see approach. We've spent an awful lot of time and resources making sure that the city doesn't become, you know, isn't negatively impacted by this. Yeah, I spent the afternoon at the League of Cities and Towns and the subject conversation down there was very much focused on this realm. And there was a lot of smaller town police chiefs bemoaning the fact that they were losing officers to other larger communities who were out competing them. Well, there were five of them in the room and we had taken officers, taken officers from two of them because we had positioned ourselves to compete more for officers. So, and we can only do that with, you know, a community of fifteen thousand instead of a community of seven thousand, right? So, and any given week, it's possible that, like any other workload, there's going to be some fluctuations, but over the long haul, we're dramatically increasing the size of the police force.
I mean, I think it's positive. It's not, the question isn't intended as criticism at all. I think it's positive.
I didn't do it that way. You know, but it's something we're mindful of, you know, as we align the two communities.
Yeah, yeah. I, I do think it's a positive move, especially because the border of the town and the city is so close.
Yeah.
So I think that it can cause jurisdictional problems. So I think it's powerful for the police actually to do more.
For sure. And then, you know, for some of the folks that were on the town board, when we put the deal together, they were like, "It doesn't do any good, you know, for my kid living just over the border to go into the city and buy his drugs and come back to the town and use them." Right? So, you know, I, I, you know, I think when we look back on it four or five years from now, I think we're going to see a major huge difference in what we're saying to ourselves, "What if we hadn't done that?" And imagine this conversation if the chief was sitting in here saying, "I'm down for officers and I don't know what to do." Right? And that's not where we are.
Well, no, I was impressed with the law here.
Yeah, and we're outside, it's a good thing. I would, I would encourage folks, and when you do your Neighborhood Watch doers, to track legislation. See if we're getting any movement in Montpelier. Push the issue with our delegation, whether it's city, town, or senators. I think we need to push that, that we need, we need some measures to, to help the courts and the state's attorneys.
Yeah, I've been in correspondence with both KC2 and Mike McCarthy, and I'm happy to support, continue to support both. Because I agree, I think that some changes need to be made with our laws to empower the police. I think it's kind of demoralizing to them and what they do to see, have to arrest the same individuals for the same thing again and again and again. And it's really demoralizing to the community, too, because we feel like we're placed in a position where it's, we're allowed to be victims. And that's...
That's not where we're meant to be. Any other comments on this, folks? Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it. You're welcome to stick around. Next item on the agenda is...
I'll move, Mr. Mayor, that we, we allocate item eight as the next agenda item and we'll, we spot and stormwater budgets after that, just to get Bill and Jen on their way. I think Jen is here.
So we have a motion to move item number eight up to the agenda. Is there a second for that?
My second.
Second by Trudy. Follow the favor, say aye.
Aye.
So committee was Tim, Trudy, and Chad. So I'll turn it over to one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Billy, you want to come up? Billy, you want to come up?
Oh, sure.
Jen is not, is not here. I've seen, I've seen this. So we interviewed Bill Pable and Jen Castillo. And both excellent applicants, ironically, new to the area.
Very.
Bill, how, how?
I think I'm going on four weeks.
Four weeks?
Is that right?
No, Jen was...
Six months?
Six months, yes, so.
Great.
Actually, we, so we're getting some people who are just coming in that want to get involved, and that's great. Both of them had very strong qualifications and I think they're going to lend themselves to be great assets to the Climate and Energy Committee.
Yeah.
Jen and...
Yeah, I mean, Bill, you just have a plethora of experience. You're working, working in local government in big cities. And Jen, she's young, she's done some of this work. She's done some of this work with Burton. Tim asked her a great question. Something wasn't economically viable, how much would you push for? And I thought she gave a great answer. Working with this Burton, that, well, it's not sustainable and it doesn't matter, you know? Like, the number's got to work. So I think with Bill's experience, her definitely experience and youth, I think we're two great candidates. And we're happy to add you to the year, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would echo, great candidates, I think will serve the community very well.
Well, how long have you been a lead professor?
About ten years, I think.
When did the, I'm familiar with it, but when did it come into play?
In the early 2000s.
It was, so a couple of years?
Yeah.
For construction and...
Both neighborhood design and also building and development.
He was a city planner for many, many years.
Have you met Jim Scottus?
Yes, we were chatting earlier today.
Do you have any issues with Jim?
Jim, you haven't used the bill.
Jim's just happy to have more people to share the work, right? More people to do the work.
So I guess, on behalf of the committee, we'd like to move the appointments of Bill Pable and Jen Castillo up to the Climate and Energy Committee.
Okay, a motion second for the appointments to the Climate and Energy Committee. Any other comments or questions?
Thanks for applying.
Yeah, fair and fair.
Turning on all of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks for coming in.
Sure.
Thanks, Jim.
So on that street lighting stuff, there are actually really interesting and somewhat difficult questions there. I know something about it, sort of enough to know how ignorant I am, but I know it's a place to go to. So if there's somebody who's working on that and would like a little help, let me know.
Thank you.
That's that man over there. End of the table.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Bye, Bill.
Right now, we'll go to the adoption of the water, wastewater, stormwater budgets. Does that be you, Sarah?
It would be. We'll keep an eye for any late joiners on the Zoom, and I'll let him in.
You know, I've seen over two, right?
Is that our first post-COVID meeting where we didn't have any Zoom participants?
It's not over yet.
Probably don't need for anymore.
That's not true. Now it's been mandated, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, is that right? No, I missed that.
And the recordings, they'll be posted for thirty days.
Yeah, starting on screen.
They spend a lot of months on that one.
Oh, I'm sure.
Hey, hey, finally my turn. So we're going to talk about the water and sewer budgets, the water, sewer, stormwater budgets this evening. In your packet, you have the FY25 Enterprise Fund Budget Proposal. The packet includes a memo with my summary of the overall rate impact, the high-level trends across the three funds, and then individual fund items that are driving or changing costs. Following the memo, there is the familiar rate sheet so you can see how rates impact our various users, followed by summary budgets, and then the big detail packets. So early or in June, on June 4th, we met with the Finance Committee to go through these budgets in detail. And the budgets you have in front of you are the budgets presented to the Finance Committee and unanimously voted, the committee voted unanimously to recommend these budgets as presented to the full council. As you are all likely aware from receiving one of these bills quarterly, city users have water service, sewer service, and stormwaters on their quarterly residential bill. And the average city residential user will be seeing about 4.5% increase overall. This is a $17.40 per quarter, just under $6 a month. The city also provides water and sewer service to residents and commercial and industrial customers outside of the city. Anyone outside of the city does not receive a city stormwater bill. Those bills are just for water and sewer, or just water, and those will be increasing on average, or would be increasing on average, 4.1%. $16.80 a quarter, or very similarly situated, a little bit under $6 a month. Overall, nothing significant is changing in the operations of the water or sewer plants. The largest change in these budgets that you will see is the proposal to add a position to support the Community Development Department with project management and stormwater projects that are coming faster than we can keep up with them. We are also proposing some capital expenditures in these budgets, which you'll see the majority of which are proposed to be funded with debt issuance and some with user fees and reserves. We have some grant funding in there as well. And then, other than that, we are still playing catch-up on the chemicals game and some utilities that kicked our butt this last year. I'd be happy to go into more detail about the capital items and the other significant changes that I've outlined in the memo, or I can move to questions or comments from the Finance Committee. Happy to take the tone of the board.
A question from Marty after. How many companies provide chemicals that you could, you could buy from?
I don't know. I know a company we work, we are buying from now has merged with another, one of their competitors. So it's getting fewer and fewer. And the other challenge is getting companies that deliver here for the amount of chemicals we need. Some won't deliver because we're not buying anything bulk for the capacity that they would do a distributor or something.
I always think small business, you work with other small businesses to both buy and buy. This doesn't work quite the same way.
Little bit different.
Now, your Colchester, you've got Newspeak, Burnt Tense.
A lot of those are with Champlin Water Districts as well.
I think, Sarah, if you just went over the enterprise funds and the aggregate and the major cost drivers as you got on in your memorandum, that would be the cap one.
All right, I would be happy to do that. So I, I think if we're going to take that approach, I would like to draw your attention to the first summary page. So sorry that these don't have page numbers. It's right after the rates, there's the memos, the rates, and then the first summary by major category. It's called, says, "All Enterprise Funds" on the top. And to draw your attention to the line second from the bottom for overall capital. And so one of the pushes that we have going into FY25 are capital initiatives across the funds, which are in total $2.1 million in capital projects. The largest of these is a $1 million stormwater project, which would be 50% grant-funded, and the city is proposing to issue debt for its match. This was at... This is a stormwater project on Lunda Drive that is tied on our list of priorities and tied on the state's list of priorities. In the water budget, we have the largest capital project is an asset management plan. This would be debt-funded, about $150,000 through a state loan. $50,000 of that would be forgiven. And this asset management plan would provide us with the details of all of the parts and pieces and status of the water plants. It would give us a timeline for repairs and maintenance and for future capital improvements. This is also a requirement, or it's looked upon very favorably when applying for grants and other funding through the state for water, sewer, stormwater infrastructure projects, and it gives us some extra points on the grading rubric. Marty, anything to add on that?
No, that sums it up. It includes our infrastructure as well.
Yeah.
So we've been touring all our valves, pump stations.
Oh, I'm so sorry. The tendency was to spread out. Recording's going to be my favorite. Also, in the water funds, you're looking at a feasibility study for adding additional pump and filter at the McQuam Water Plant to see what it would take to expand operations there to serve our growing customer base. We have three projects in the water fund. FY25 would be the first of three years. So we have filter valves, pump rehab, and some turbine meters down at the plant, all of which we have nice multiples of three that need rehabbing or replacement. And we are proposing we would do those FY25, '26, and '27 to get those taken care of and back on schedule. In the wastewater fund, we are talking about replacing the Vector truck. This would be approximately $750,000. This would be a debt, a debt item, this would be funded with debt, not user fees. And we would trade in the current truck, but this, our current truck has a leak and it's undersized for what we're doing. And so a replacement truck would better fit our needs.
What's the specifics of that vehicle? The, the replacement? Yeah. So it's a bigger, it would be a tandem. Ours now is a single. It's a bigger tank on it, bigger jet hose, more powerful. We would also probably have a magnet on it where we can lift manhole covers instead of our guys manually doing those. And that's basically clean-out? Clean-out and jetting. If we're on a water leak, it cleans out around the break. We just got our Vector, our Vector now is a 2014. We just got that back from Charlie Voice today. Had a main bearing seal replaced and a rear axle that was broken replaced, so it's...
Marty, is there one, the one you tried out last summer when I saw you?
There was one, yeah. It's not that one, but one similar to that, yeah. It's not that one, but one similar to that, yeah.
All right. That sums it up for major capital items across the enterprise funds. So, those items, the proposed new staff person, and then catching up on utilities and chemicals are the major changes. Any other questions? You answered my question about why our rate was higher than outside users, so good.
We're getting a drop due, right? It's getting a new article, right?
Yes, there's a replacing, replacing the 2004 ship in Colorado.
Wow, that has been around a while.
It's got a broken frame and still at the shop if you're there. Add it to your on sale.
Are you thinking that the upgrade at the water system at the bomb shore is due to a lack of our getting water from Fairfax?
No, it's just as we continue to extend our lines, we're probably gonna need to improve one of those plants. The Fairfax plant is a gravity-fed plant, so it's at its capacity. So, any expansion would come from McQuam.
Sarah, maybe I missed it. So, is the stormwater fee going up per parcel?
Yes, it is. And that's included in that. The rate increases that I mentioned at the beginning are in the aggregate, which is the way the user experiences the bill. But on the water, we have 3.14% increase on the water side. We have 4.66% on wastewater, which is really reflective of those chemicals, sludge removal costs that are driving us up. And then, the stormwater budget is a $1.93 increase per ERU. And it's a smaller fee, so it's a 12% increase, but it's $2 a quarter.
So, you're thinking overall 17 bucks?
Yep, overall, right? $17.40 a quarter for your average residential user. Our average consumption is still hovers around 25,000 gallons of water usage per quarter.
So, do you come about your budget amount based on what projects are on the horizon? I mean, it's not like, stormwater isn't like water and wastewater where you have the infrastructure?
Yet, we're building more of the infrastructure. So, stormwater is more volatile than the water. The water and sewer funds, they've been around, they're well-established. We have a good sense of who's working there, what the operations look like, and we're able to keep those budgets steady and predictable over time. Stormwater, this is the fifth year of the stormwater fund, and we're still figuring out what is the best way for us to approach stormwater in the budget. And as a small fund, the large, small dollars make large percentages, which makes it feel more volatile. And so, I think we've come to a good spot on who in this building is spending time on stormwater, how much of their time. So, looking at really a full costing of personnel and associated benefits, thinking about grant funds for projects, other sources of funds for projects, building a reserve in that fund as we go along, and then tracking the ERUs as parcels change.
I'm going back to the towns discussion with stormwater. We don't get state funds to go into that, or do we?
We get some state funds.
But they're more capital project-specific, right?
But not just in general funding to offset operating support?
And it is. You've got two buckets in stormwater. You've got like a capacity bucket, and then you've got a project bucket, right? And so, we're just beginning now to get to the point of doing some of the projects. And some of that's why we need that extra position, because Chip's just drowning.
No, so would that, what would that person's title be? Like, is it a professional position, is it?
Yeah, it's project management capacity, so it'll probably be planner or associate planner or something like that.
Other questions?
I realize that stormwater is the smallest piece of the budget, but it's, to your point, it's new and...
Still finding its place at the table.
I mean, it's a huge unfunded mandate, right? The state designated us as an MS4. Gave us, you know, 20 years to touch the screen.
It's unusual for the state to do that.
Doesn't happen often, but...
You being sarcastic. Unfunded mandate.
Well, to me, I think, I mean, chemicals are out of control. $100,000.
Yeah, you're out there mercy.
Live in Canada?
Yeah, right?
And just so people are aware, it went from $179 in 2022 for chlorine to $439 in 2024. And that's just, it's huge, I mean, unexplainable.
So, Marty, when Clorox is on sale, I'll let you know. Sarah, any other, or council, any other questions for Sarah?
Do we need a motion to adopt it?
I think we do consider adoption.
Yes, we do.
Did any of us on the Finance Committee have any thoughts on having an idea about the new ones?
Thank you, Buck McCas, is what it is?
Yeah, I think it's also communicated should be added too, because we're gonna have to educate really well why it's changing.
Here, no other questions or comments? All those in favor of the...
We did a motion. We need a motion.
That we adopt the wastewater, water, wastewater, stormwater budgets.
Let's stick to that motion.
Motion from 10, seconded by Eric. Any other questions, comments? Harry Young, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Motion passes.
Hey, we can all flush our toilets and run our water for the next period.
Thank you all. Thank you. Only if you pay your bills, okay?
Yeah.
I'm gonna shut off, though. Those, those, okay.
That's statutory, that's, that's a wrong card.
That's a good sign, you have to ask what color they are.
I should have told them.
All right, let's move on. Last, one of the last items is mayor's report. I don't have a whole lot. Seems like we've done a lot since we've been here, but outside of our public safety, I think most things are going fairly well. Marty, one question, I noticed, I guess, more and more dead trees in the greenbelt. What's the plan for removal?
We've taken a lot of them down, trimmed a lot of them. I'm not aware of any, if there are some, I know.
I'll text you.
We had a lot of the Dutch elm that we took down in the last couple of months.
The ash.
Ash, rather, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, a half a dozen died by, they're totally dead. I'll text you the ashes. They can put them on your list. Concerts are back on, no rain out yet, right?
Yeah, no, and if there is, I'll vote 14, Sarah.
Thank you for organizing that. One of these guys on this end, do?
Arlie Young took that over the chair.
What's that?
Arlie Young took that over the chair.
Could you put the shade up a little bit, I got the sun.
I'll take a regular reflection.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. I mean, I tried to get him to dim it, but he wouldn't do that.
There you go.
Hey, Marty!
Oh, hang on.
Yeah, well, talk to Shane Mokash, you get that mowed.
That same section?
Same section, yeah, they mowed it. And it came back in nice hayfield right now, but if you can get it done.
They had mowed it just before we were down there working. They had mowed it just before we were down there working.
Yeah, I was gonna mention too, I enjoyed the public safety meeting we had at the, in the auditorium, and a lot of people got things out. And I was talking, sitting with a young lady, and she says to me, she says, "I'm taking shooting lessons." Yeah, and says, "Well, you gotta do what you gotta do," you know? But I think we're doing okay. And the one that got arrested 70 times, she's in jail, I guess, isn't she?
All right, so, still in there?
Last I heard.
I got a gentleman, a 48-year-old, who was robbing places, is in jail as well.
Yeah. And then, I understand on Diamond Street, you had another drug bust there?
Not another bust, no, but arrest.
Yeah, arrest. No, business is picking up.
Just going back, want to thank Morris Perrell for his cleaning up of Maple and Pine, right? I know it's not totally done, but that will help as well. We mentioned, we mentioned the railroad property, but Morris has stepped up and cleaned that as well, which I think looks great. Seems to be there's some development opportunity, I would think, but we'll let that figure that out. Julia, is that?
That's it.
Marie?
Someone in that area commented on how much better things were since they've cleaned out all of that area, so that's a, that's a real positive. Again, we had our neighborhood watch meeting, and we gave out some signs and stuff, and so I think that went well, and I think that's only gonna get better as time goes on. We get a couple of people that had never been before, and they had an awful lot to offer, so you know, I think it, I think those neighborhood watch meetings are a real positive thing. And we, you know, I feel bad that we had kind of let them go by the wayside for so long, and I, and I... That's my bad, but...
You will be receiving any reprimand?
I'm sure I will. I guess, how much time do I usually have to do this? So, and again, thank you, Marty, for getting those signposts up for those folks. They were really happy. So, that, I think that's all I've got.
Is our youth situation on LaSalle better?
Yes.
With the little bike gang?
Yeah, that's been, that's been better. Somebody reported that they had seen two teenagers with a gun, and that when they called the police, the police came down. The person that they thought had the gun didn't have it, and thought maybe they had passed it to the other guy with a backpack and had taken off. Whether it was a real gun or looked like a real gun, I don't know. But I don't think they ever found anything there. But it was that same group of kids, so... So, I think it just bears watching, and again, if things come up, they do the text chain and, you know, sort of have us all be on the lookout. So, yeah. So, I guess that's all I have.
Chad?
I just want to thank Salem's PD for two things that they've done over the past month. One, they were quick to clean up Hol Park, which was cool. Marty, I guess, I kind of walked around the park. They did pretty quick work with the needles, but there was like, there was a lot of broken glass and stuff, like by the swing sets and...
On the playground itself?
Yeah, like where the mulch is, so maybe when it gets mowed, quick one through. The other person, Salem's PD again, Corporal Fuller. Fortunately, Ashley and I were robbed last weekend. They took her purse from my, our house.
The vehicle.
A vehicle. Yeah. She didn't have it locked. She was taking the baby out of the car, kind of spaced it. They did, so they stole the purse. I live in Salem, obviously. They tried to take some money out, places low gold, didn't work, and they ended up spending swans. So, Corporal Fuller worked with Swan PD, and they like, I think it was within 45 minutes identified who she was. So, they made pretty quick work of it between the two of them, so I like, thank you. That's all I got.
Chad, do you know, are the needles in Holton Park, is that relatively new? Is that the new hangout place?
I saw a Facebook page, just like everybody else.
Right, but I don't know, like, has that been, do you know if that's been an ongoing problem at Holton Park?
I drive by it pretty often, and I work late hours, so I don't see people in the car very often at late at night, so...
I mean, it was more of a case, it looked like somebody just emptied their stash out.
Okay.
They were all located in one area.
There was also like, when I walked around, threw away like, so there was the beer, you know, beer bottle of glass that got picked up, and then there was definitely like alcoholic beverages, like where the, where the benches are, like in the middle of the park, you know what I mean, like the cooking tables and stuff, right by that bridge, the bridge that goes over. So, people are definitely in there, you know? Couple cans of twisted tea don't bother me nearly as much as...
The needles.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Eric?
Got a few. I had someone comment, actually before I was elected, and I just had it on my list to bring up. Someone that lives in Fairfield after the Fairfield project was completed, said there's a lot of old trees that have been taken down as part of the project, that cut down a lot of the noise that came off of Fairfield. So, I was thinking, when we go through and look at trees again at some point, paying close attention to Fairfield, because it has a lot of, shouldn't have fast, but had fast traffic and loud traffic on that road, and the trees that we put in might help cut some of the residential noise.
Where are you referring to?
Fairfield, Fairfield Street.
Mostly up by the hospital end, which has a lot of opening spaces now. They used to have more tree canopy cover in that area. But if we address it sooner than later, trees take, you know, however long to recantive, so...
Because FII, I've had a conversation with the CEO at the hospital about doing the greenbelt with trees coming into town. That's...
That'd be nice.
So, he's aware of it, he says he would pursue it, so...
Awesome, thank you.
It's a tough spot for trees up there because of the combination of the power lines and the narrowness of the greenbelt up there.
I think the power lines on the opposite side, though.
Right.
From where this neighbor is complaining. So, this would be the south side where the power lines aren't.
Yeah, that's the side that's narrow, greenbelt.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, so we spent a lot of nervous, Marty, we spent a lot of time trying to find a good solution out there, which doesn't really got a way, you know, you can't circle back to, those are some of the constraints for it.
The only other things I had really was, I had some neighbors still commenting on the excessive speed on Fairfield, on Upper Walden still, I know we're working through that, and then we have the data now that we've collected, so I'd like to see like, what we can do to maybe either look at, I mean, I don't always endorse speed bumps, I know we've talked about those in the past. I know Ennisburg just put one on Orchard Street, because people kept using that as a bypass, which that's exactly where Upper Walden is, get it, but through there. And, you know, there's been some people complaining about it, but they said mostly people slow down, kids aren't, you know, able to cross the road without worrying about, you know, having a car that's flying down, coming at them. But just, I'd like to see something kind of progress with that area.
Marie's a big supporter.
Do you want us to hold off baby?
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, no, it's a catchphrase, right? So, you got speed bumps that are killing cars, they're already unnatural speed bumps, and then you have the, yeah, no, I know, I get that.
Just so you know, just so you can share, Marie, wanted to share your experience with speed bumps.
Yeah, I requested something northbound, that would become like Interstate 89. And so, we put in speed bumps, well, they were kind of more divots than they were speed bumps. Well, all it did was encourage, the faster they drove over them, the less effective they were. So, if anything, they were going faster. Also... Yeah. Also, we had, actually, we had a neighbor who had a tenant that worked third shift, who was trying to sleep during the day. Every truck was a trailer that went over there, correct?
Well, I wonder about that, it's like the North End of Burlington has those speed tables now. We've tested those, we've seen the day behind them, it's quite close, aren't as loud. You have to slow down while you're in the airborne.
We put those in on South Avenue.
The tables?
Yes.
They didn't like that either. They would slow down, go over the then, take off. Yeah, honk their horn as they were going over.
It's not an easy solution, it says parking PD up there, wants someone around trying to catch them. As I know, like, it goes back to the Fairfield project that bypassed people to Upper Walden, and a lot of people haven't been using it still, and they do still use it to bypass the lights at Fairfield and Fair, 104, 105, that intersection up there, they bypassed that intersection, so...
Can't get any worse than when I was a teenager driving down that road.
Were you one of the troublemakers? The only other two things I had, or one thing I had was, this Sunday's our Word 5 block party at Barlow Street School. Yep, we're gonna have burgers and dogs, care of Robbie, Bosme Market, he's giving them to us, cost, rec departments. Donating for the use of their yard games, as well as a generator, a speaker, and I can't remember the other things, a brand tables. They've been great. Lee and Kelly have done a lot to help me out with that. So kudos to them. And then we're also going to have music from noon to 2:00. Care of a couple sponsors who contributed towards the event. Thank you, Molly Rand, who's another community volunteer and boards, helping me get in the sponsors, so... Should be fun. All right, I know you've got people left here for you.
No, I started the neighborhood parties well before you, Eric. But I just don't have live music, right?
So you were 17 years old when you started those?
Yeah, yeah. You have added though. Some neighbors on Bank are concerned about the fire, the apartment that burned. They're putting a triplex back in, but this time every apartment's going to have three bedrooms. So the neighbors are concerned about that number of people in that little lot. But that is what our legislation allows for, so I don't, I know that there's, some folks are appealing that. But because of the laws that passed in Montpelier, I think that it's probably going to go. But just know that people are not happy.
If nothing, it's going to be a nice test for that legislation, right? I mean, it's going to, you'll have, you'll have firsthand evidence of what the impact's going to be.
And I, Chip sent me specs of what it's going to look like. It's, it's not going to keep with the, it doesn't look terrible, but it's not going to keep with the feel of the neighborhood. With the older houses, the Victorians, it's not going to. But, but I believe the legislation says that you can't make the folks go through the developmental review board. Is that true?
I'm not quite ready to go there yet. Chip and I have had some conversations about what are some ways that we can respond to protect the character of neighborhoods and still comply with the statute.
And is it, like, what type of policy is it? I guess people are concerned. Is it market rate? Is it...
And it's getting different, right? Yeah, market rate.
Market rate, okay. Okay.
You should speak to us.
Yeah. And the other thing is just consider, a lot of people who are still concerned about the security at Champlain House and Congress in Maine. I think it's worth us looking at as we do more big building projects, look at some type of security, making that like, having conversations about that. I know when my son lived in New Jersey, there was a, was a person that sat at the gate and let people in. A doorman and, and there was a superintendent in the building who got free rent and lived there and like, kind of kept a watch over everything. But the folks in that building, and there's the Champlain housing above Twigs, that has had some issues. So I think that...
So one of the bullets that was in that list was redirecting resources towards it. And so we've just made peace with the unions on this after this morning. And so we'll be filling in that due full-time person who's going to do parking enforcement and security on Main Street with a high visible presence every single day. Awesome. 40 hours a week. With the authority flex in her schedule for some events and with a strong focus on Congress and Maine.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I just feel bad that there's some really amazing people living there that don't feel safe. Because people are just pushing any button until someone lets them in. And then people who shouldn't be in the building are in the building. People just feel uncomfortable with that.
I have that concern with the Lake Street building too.
Yeah, that, that's, that's been my, probably one of my major concerns.
And that was another thing we discussed in our neighborhood watch meeting, was that's going to add at least 100 people to our...
Yeah, right. And I don't think that the city should bear the burden of the cost of security for those buildings. I think the landlord should bear the cost of the security for the buildings that they are making money off of. That's just my opinion. It's probably not going to be popular with landlords, but I don't want the city to, I don't want the taxpayers to have to...
I, I don't disagree with you, but that cost is passed on and now you're elevating the cost of housing again.
Yeah, I know, but...
It's a no-win situation.
What's like, I know, I know.
I agree, I agree with you.
I just, yeah, I know, I understand what you're saying. It's just as we continue to add housing units, we have to think about how can we make sure that the people in those settings feel safe and comfortable. And that's all for me.
Well, and again, Trudy, to that, I mean, if you, if you have a security person and you give him or them free housing, you know, then it's kind of a...
Right, it's like the old building superintendent gets free rent. Like, what was his name on that show that...
Schneider.
Schneider, yeah, it's like the Schneiders. You know it. All the older people know.
One day, one day at a time.
Yes!
Valerie Bert Milli.
Yes!
I can keep going on if you want.
Don't, please don't. Schneider with his tool belt kept an eye on everything.
Mr. Hawkins?
I had a couple of comments. At the public safety meeting, there was two things that stuck out in my mind. One was the police chief telling us, telling the population that not to panic. There's a lot of stuff going on in the city and not to panic, that they have a good handle on what's going on. I thought that was comforting for the people that were there. But also, in my mind, those people are relying on us here at this table to make sure they're protected as well. So I think as agencies come in or people come in to try and solve the problems of homelessness, drug use by way of providing additional services for them, we need to be diligent in what they're trying to provide and how that's going to, what consequences that's going to be for our neighborhoods. The other thing was, and I was very fearful, when the lady stood up at the end and told us that she went to Hardak and took down some things that were out there. That's a very dangerous prospect. A possibly life-threatening prospect. And I don't think people should be doing that. They should leave that to the police and not take that upon themselves to go into these places and dismantle those things. I don't care who you are. Some of these people are, have no fear. She was a very small woman, very courageous, but I just was fearful for her. I hope she doesn't do that again. As far as what's going on on the ward. Marty, Messenger Street between Farrar Street and Ruble Street. There's a bunch of tree limbs that are impeding on people walking on the sidewalk, you know, having to put their head down and, you know, I don't know who's...
On the outside?
On the west, on the east side. And on the bottom of Ruble Street and Messenger Street where...
On Cook's house, I think.
Yeah. And, and there was some, there's some over by Farrar Street as well. And also where Ed Cee's usually live on the corner there of Ruble. And there's a bunch of sand that's built up there. And I don't remember where that, that's come from, but boy, there's a lot of it there.
In the sidewalk?
In the sidewalk.
Washing down the south side sidewalk and accumulates on the east side.
And that's, that's really a walk-around. I have a question as to why the sidewalk was all replaced on Congress Street, north side, except for in front of Jeff's driveway, all the way down in front of the dentist's office on Congress Street. That looks like it was never replaced, and that's in very rough condition.
From the road down?
Yeah, from Jeff's Road's driveway.
I was going to say.
Coming down, coming down Congress Street all the way to the, maybe the walkway of the dentistry.
That sidewalk had been replaced about two years before that project, three years before that project.
Really?
And it wasn't sealed properly in it.
Yeah.
The whole top surface got washed off.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, that's a, it's kind of a rough way to go. One last thing is, we sit here, we try to have the downtown take care of the front of their facades and their buildings, either with a person that you have that does the window washing. But we have some responsibility with what's going on across the street. And I walk by there routinely out with my wife. And those windows and the, the window frames are absolutely terrible. Someone needs to wash those. And I don't know whose responsibility that is in those buildings. But we did spend money and give away financial breaks to people to have their buildings, their new buildings look like that. Ace Hardware certainly doesn't have their buildings look like that. Those buildings across the street from here shouldn't look like that either, so...
A vacant space or the aggravation?
Both. Both.
I'll check because I know he had contracted that out.
Yeah.
That, and I don't know who, who your man is, who goes around doing windows, but that guy would be perfect.
Yes, that's who he, that's who he had contracted, Jonathan.
Yeah.
But I'll find out.
So the responsibility of that is the landlord, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of businesses have to pay Jonathan.
Yeah. And he does a very, he does a very good job and he's very dedicated.
He does our towers to the, our...
But that, the people will think of that as a project that we've instituted and that we take some responsibility in. And when you walk by there on the sidewalk and look at that, you're kind of ashamed of it. So, and that's all I have.
I, I forgot one thing on my list. Is that okay if I?
That's quite all, actually.
Sorry. Do we, does the city have like ordinances against like panhandling? Because I know that the town is having some issues with that in the development out there, so someone was just asking. We don't see it a lot here on occasion, but has that, is that something that we say?
We haven't enacted any.
Okay.
They're tough.
I think there's a sign. Isn't there a sign that says no?
There's one at the shopping plaza.
Okay, that's my thought. Oh, the shopping plaza. Okay, so I just didn't know. Okay, that's all I can...
Remind you on the block side, but I haven't crossed it.
It doesn't seem to be a huge problem here, but someone was curious.
I have a couple of quick things. Special thank you to Jim Levy for his efforts on bringing for that, for the year. He spent a lot of time on that. So thank you to Jim for that.
That's regarding LeBron Searle, just the manager.
Oh, is that right?
And have, do you have any pulse on like, the kinds of folks that are coming in?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet?
And then...
Some folks, you know, they, they are running a special on one-way tickets, so...
So we have, Chip's not here, so I don't think we made any headway on Stevens parking discussion, right? We talked about the Navy parking on one side of the street.
Yeah, I, that hasn't come up in staff conversations.
Did you get any follow-up on that?
That'll be the case for the next few weeks.
What's that?
One, one side parking.
My side, you can park down there doing the stormwater stuff.
Because you're doing that storm...
Oh, Eric, they did.
Of course, I am. We started it today.
Sarah, when should we expect our, I know this is in your department of tax bills?
We will be processing them on Thursday. I expect to have them drop mid, middle of next week with 30-day lead time for the post due date in mid-August.
And that has all our new tax increases?
It does, yes.
And then any movement on 12 Congress?
Movement, but not tax carry.
Do I entertain a motion?
No, a motion to approve warrants, 6:30, 24.
Well, seconded.
Yeah.
Motion to approve warrants, seconded.
And second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone to vote? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to approve minutes 6:10, 24.
Second.
Second motion. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, anyone to vote?
Motion adjourned.
Second.